All right, so good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order, and unfortunately, we don't have a quorum today. But we will go over the presentations and proclamations, and we will prepare for a meeting next Tuesday, assuming that we will have a quorum budget. So we'll start today is March 14, 2023, and it's 7:07 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
So Councilman Chowdhury.
Here.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes, please.
Mayor Galad, present. We do not have Councilman Rafai or Councilman Hassan, so like he stated, we don't have a quorum.
All right. Community announcements. I just have one, Mayor. This is an early invitation, but I'd like to get it out there. So it is one of the Biamadishi organizations, Silek Shador de Kishurma Association of Michigan would like to invite you to annual Ifta dinner, which is on Sunday, April 2, 2023, at 6:30 at Gates of Columbus. So we are inviting you all to join us for the breaking, the fasting on Ramadan month, April 2, 2023, at 6:30. I'll remind it again, and it's coming up, the fasting month. That's all from me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to let everyone know that, as you know, we have been working hard on recruiting police officers, reserve officers, and dispatchers. The Michigan Association of Police actually created a recruiting video, and they allowed departments to personalize those at the end by adding our logo, and they created a QR code for us that people can scan with our phones, and we also have the city's website on there. So it's on our police Facebook page, and the city administration uploaded it on the city's website under the police department. Feel free to share it from the police department's page, and just trying to get the word out there that we continue to hire and police officers, reserve officers, and dispatchers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also on the community announcements, you may note that I've started, we've started adding some things to that as well, if anyone wants to periodically check that. The board of review announcement is still on there. We are still taking the applications for the assessing board of review till the 16th, which is the last day. I put a notice on there that we just awarded another grant for economic development. It's a big one. It's a three-year, full-time position for someone directly to work with economic development for the community, which will significantly help our community. I also added a thumbnail picture in regards to Spring Ramadan Food Drive on March 19 at 1:00 PM in the town center parking lot. And lastly, there's also a Hamtramck Parks Conservancy updated, update loaded up there on. Well, I'm not going to go into detail because it's very lengthy, and the chair of the conservancy, Mr. Mejiar, actually prepared it. Very informative of the future of Veterans Park. So that's all I have there.
Mr. Mayor, can you make an announcement about the charity basketball as well?
Yeah.
Don't forget about that.
So we will have the charity basketball game on the 17th of March at 7:00 PM in Dearborn High School. It was announced to be in Exeter Ford High School, but they changed it to Dearborn High School. And actually, it's between Hamtramck and Dearborn. Last year was here in Hanley School and Hamtramck, and we won that game. So this time, we're trying to defend our title. But Mayor Mahmoud is, you know, so confident that they will win this game.
Are all the council members a part of it?
They are invited to come.
Who plays?
The team. We have a team from Hamtramck. They want me to play, but I don't know how to play basketball. I told them if I play, we will lose.
That's what it should be. It should be council members and mayors against each other. I think that would be a great opportunity. That would be a great charity event.
I like that idea. But I don't think it was important.
This time, we're going to try from now on.
I mean, I don't know how to play, but...
You don't? But that's the beauty of it. It'd be entertaining.
This is the second annual, correct?
Yeah.
So I mean, we'll see where this goes.
They actually want some elected officials to play, if possible, and the tickets will be $10 for adults, $5 for kids, and the money will go for victims of the earthquake in Turkey and Syria this time.
It's Friday, March 17, then, 7:00.
I'll be there. All right, any more announcements? Okay, let's move to the proclamations, recogitions.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we announce that we're going to have the special meeting?
Yes.
On Tuesday?
Yeah, it'll be posted as well.
Okay, thank you.
Probably, most likely next Tuesday. That's it. So the proclamations, recogitions, and presentations. The first one is presentation, City of Hamtramck Annual Audit for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023, UHY.
Actually, we're presenting the audit for the year end, 6:30, '22.
Sounds up to you.
Can we start with your PowerPoint? Your PowerPoint.
Yeah, my name is Marlee Beach. I'm the principal, first partner on this job. This is Jen. Jen is the senior manager that was on the job. She was actually the book on the ground. She was the one here every day. I was the one that popped in occasionally. So as opposed to going through the financial statements in, you know, page by page detail, what we do is we present, we do a PowerPoint, kind of hit the highlights of things. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask anytime. As part of our standards, we're required to let the board know of, you know, things that went on with the audit, what's going on, different communications. And again, that's what this presentation is all about. Next slide, please. The financial statements, to receive those are the city's financial report. The only part that is ours is the independent auditor's report. We did audit the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, and each major fund. So in theory, not theory, practically, we audited all the funds of the city of Hamtramck. As of the year end, June 30, 2022, and your financial statements also include a lot of notes. You'll notice that there's, the notes have now, I don't know, probably three times what the financial reports are. As detailed, in our report, we did issue an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the highest opinion that we can give. Standards also require that we provide you with some information about our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standard, as well as other certain information during the audit. The accounting, next page, please. The accounting policies, as I said, they are your financial statements, so that the management is responsible for the selection and use of the accounting policies along with the city. Those policies are summarized in Note 1 of the audited financial statement. This year was a big year for GASB. It's GASB number 87, which was leases. What that did is any leases that the city leases to or from are now required to be on the face of the financial statements. Did not have a material effect to the financial statements here, but if, from now on, if you lease anything or lease something to somebody, you will see it on the financial statement. So what it does is it kind of grosses up your assets and grosses up your liabilities. And that effect is almost zero, but it just increases both of those. As part of the financial statements, there are estimates made. The biggest estimate is your OPEB liability and an F pension liability. What we do is we evaluate the reasonableness, reasonable-ness, there we go, those estimates. And we did find them all to be reasonable. We did provide, the list of significant audit entries was provided to management as part of the management representation letter. Next page. We're not aware of the audited financial statements being included with any other documents. We replaced report. We didn't have any disagreements with city management. Everybody's well aware it was a turnover year. So everybody put forth a valiant effort. Number one, just, you know, to find things. It's always difficult to find something that you didn't do or that you didn't put away. So we had management helping us find, you know, finding records and things like that. And to our knowledge, there were no consultations with any other accountants during the course of the audit. There were no issues discussed with management prior to our appointment. The audit was a little bit late this year. As I said, the major factor was, you know, the turnover. We normally start our audit in October. Just due to getting things done and completed, we weren't able to start the audit until November. During the course of the fieldwork, the city kept reviewing, kept looking at the financial records, which is, you know, that's a good thing. It's always a template ready when we get in there, but we knew, and everybody knew here, that because of the turnover, there would be things that would be, still be looked at. So we had, there was about 34 different adjusting entries for various accounts. Required OPEB valuation schedules had to be reissued, and that delayed, they weren't even available till mid-January. So once again, that goes on the face of the financial statements, so we had to wait for those to be correct and be updated so that we could issue correct financial statements. Let Jen move over a little bit of the charts. As I said, this is just kind of a general summary of the financial statements.
So since we're going to be focusing more on the general fund, the general fund is almost like the heart of the city. So I'm going to highlight only the significant increases and decreases in the chart. So on the asset side, if you look at your cash and cash equivalents, there's almost 2 million, 2.2 million increase there. The large part of it is coming from the money that the city received for the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan money. The standards require that any money received related to ARPA or the state actually requires on the standard that if anything has not been paid or spent out, it has to be retained in the books of the city as cash and also as unearned revenue. You'll see it later in the next slide on the liability side. There's also a large increase on the unearned related to the ARPA money. And then another large item in the asset section of the general fund is the receivables. The large part of it is coming from your CVTRS or the state shared revenue. This year, it went up significantly. So the receivable on the books as of June 30, 2022 pertains to the June funding, which is normally collected after like July and August. So, and then there's also the income tax receivable aspect that's been booked in 2022. Next slide. So here, the liability side, if you look at the, there's a section that's called unearned revenue. The large money is coming from that ARPA. And then the other highlights there is the deferred inflows. If you look at the deferred inflows from 1 million to, from 200,000 to 1 million this year, it's all coming significantly from those, what do you call this, the grants and the receivable. So which means, what it means is like, if you have any receivables outstanding as of June 30, 2022 that's not being collected within the 60 days after your fiscal year, and it remains as a deferred inflows. And another factor on the deferred inflows is the impact of the GASB 87, which Marlee discussed earlier, related to the lease. So there's a factor about, I think it's only about 115,000 of that is related to the leases. And then the other, the payables and other accruals also decreased this year. The large factor on the decrease is the, last year, we did an accrual on, related to the three properties with Sara Garrett, because in the past year, in 2021, the Wayne County is only covering 300,000 of that, the remaining properties. But I think in 2022, there's an agreement with Wayne County that they will be covering the entire three properties for almost approximately 950,000. So that accrual was reversed out in 2022 as it is no longer needed. So that's the large amount of the decrease there from '21 and '22. And another factor is the completion of the alley construction, which is approximately 440,000. Next slide, please. So on the general fund revenues, I'm going to highlight with the, first one is the increase in the property tax. Everybody knows that the taxable value increased, you know, from '21 to '22. So that's basically the reason for the increase on the property tax. And then the state share, as I explained earlier, the receivable went up, and so the revenue for the entire year also went up compared to last year. And another thing new in the state share is the marijuana revenue sharing, which you guys don't have, which the city doesn't have it, I think, last year. It started in 2022. And the fines and for features also increased in terms of the revenue this year. Basically, the party fines were implemented. You'll see also the impact of that one in the expense later on in the next slide. Income taxes also went up this year as compared to last year. There's been a tremendous improvement in terms of filing and collection. Follow-up, I think there was like additional people put into the income tax department to help out with the follow-up of the collection. But you will see the other revenue on that slide went down significantly, almost approximately 1 million. That's because of last year with all the COVID relief fund that was received by the city. Those were all spent last year. That's about 1 million, and which you were subjected to what we call the single audit last year, and that was, didn't happen in 2022.
Can I stop you here? So it says last year, 2021, the income tax was 2.6, almost 2.7. And in your highlights here, it says it increased by 2.3 million. It will break it up to 5 million, not 4. And in Page 11 of your PDF, it listed as 5 million, but here it's listing as 4 million.
Where is that?
The previous one? You want me to go to the pre-
Income tax, over there, 90%. So here, in the log report.
In the financial, okay, let me reach, let...
In Page 11, you will find it.
Here's 11.
It would say 5 million something. And in the highlights, it says increased by 2.3 million. So if you add it to 2021, 2.7, you will make it 5 million.
So income tax is almost 4.1.
But it was, it says there in your introduction, increased by 2.3 million, and last year it was 2.7 million. That would bring it to 5 million. And it says in Page 11 here, 5 million, so...
Page 11?
Page 11, in the long report, the audit report.
Oh, okay. So this is the full accrual accounting. So what it does is, the difference will be coming from, when you do the general fund, is calculated using the modified accrual basis. And then Page 11 is on the full accrual basis. So GASB requires the general fund to be converted to full accrual. The only difference between those two is the amount that's retained in the deferred inflows. Because what it is, those are receivables that you guys have not collected within the timeframe of the standard, the 60 days. So in the general fund, if you didn't collect that within the 60 days, so it will be considered as a deferred inflow. So meaning, you're not recognizing the revenue in the general fund. But in the full accrual, the standard requires you to recognize it as revenue. So that's approximately 900,000. So that's where the difference of your income tax on Page 11 versus the general fund of 4 million. So that, it's just the way the standards, accounting standards works it. Like anything that you cannot collect within the 60 days, you cannot recognize it as your revenue under your general fund, under the fund accounting. But on the full accrual, standard says, oh, we're going to recognize it right away as a revenue.
So we still can say it increased by 2.3 million?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it just didn't come in in that timeframe.
Yeah, in that timeframe. Any receivables, which you will see also later on, even the grants. If you have any receivable, let's say you spent it, you need reimbursement from the, let's say, the county, and you didn't get the collection or the receivable from them within the 60 days, in your fund accounting, which is in your general fund, whatever, the other funds, it will be reported as a deferred inflows. Meaning the state is saying it's not available yet.
Like, don't count your chickens before they hatch. So the general fund does, if it's not there, it doesn't count yet.
I see in Page 14, you listed it as 4 million.
Yes, yeah.
And then when I was adding, as far as...
Yeah, yeah. So you will see on our, there's also a reconciliation that was, that is usually prepared as part of the financial statements, which is bridging from the fund level to the full accrual. Because the full accrual is almost like what you see like as a for-profit, you know, everything is recognized. There's no, it's just the way the GASB works. They have like this restriction in terms of recognizing revenue on the fund level. All right, any more questions? Okay. I think that's about it on the general fund. So let's go over in the general fund expenditures. So the largest increase here is the function of the public safety. I think there's a lot of movement within the public safety department. One of the factors that resulted to the increase are the ambulances, pick hours also increased. That's about 230,000. And we've seen a significant increase in overtime. I think with not enough people in the public safety, the overtime with the demands of the, you know, of the service. So the overtime also increased on that aspect. So that's mainly the increase on the public safety. And then, but that also got offset with the general government. If you look at your general government, it decreased compared to last year. The large part of it, as I explained earlier, is the accrual that was done in 2021 related to that Sara Garrett for the three properties. So this year, in '22, that was reversed. So that decreased your expenditure in 2022. And also last year, 2021 was the last, alleyway reconstruction was completed in fiscal year 2021. So you won't see any capital project expenditure in 2022 for alleyway reconstruction. And then also in 2021, the last payment of the debt for the LGLP 2012 bonds, that was, the last payment was made in 2021. So that's approximately 200,000 also. Any questions? So we also discussed the water and sewer fund revenues. So in this case, the water and sewer operates like a for-profit, so it's recorded as a full accrual. But there's not a whole lot of movement with regards to the water and sewer fund. I think the main thing is the penalty and interest income that was received by the city. Those were suspended during the pandemic until, I think, 2021. So in 2022, that's basically the largest revenue for 2022. All right, and then the expenditure on water and sewer, you'll see an increase in operation and maintenance. This all relates to the lead line replacement projects. That's approximately about 930,000. So that's the largest increase in the expenditure for operations and maintenance. And another is the general and administrative increase. From our review or from our audit, we've seen an increase in professional services related to jet VAP operations, plus some consulting fees as well. And also, there was like, I think, one of the, an SRF 7603, which will happen in 2023. We started having those issuance costs or what you call the debt issuance cost. So that should, since the water and sewer is operating sort of more similar to a for-profit, so that's already recognized as an expenditure for this year. Next slide. So we're also required to report internal control over financial reporting. So in conjunction with our audit of the financial statements, we consider the city's internal control over financial reporting as a basis for designing our auditing procedures for the purpose of expressing our opinion on the financial statements, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control over financial reporting. We are required to communicate in writing to those charged with governance all material witnesses and significant deficiencies that have been identified during our audit. The definitions of the material witnesses and significant deficiencies on the back on the next slide. So basically, a material witness is like, it's a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statement will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. The difference between material and significant, I mean, it's also another deficiency, but it's severe enough that we have to report it to those charged in governance. So next slide. So basically, after our audit, we can probably skip this slide to, it's the same thing as the first one. So during our audit, we found, I think, three material witnesses as part of the audit. The first one is the state grant reconciliation. This one, we noted numerous financially distressed cities, villages, and township, which is what they call FBCBT grant, that were long outstanding since, I cannot remember, '21, '22, probably, yeah. So since this year, it became material, so we have to report it as a material witnesses. So management response with regards to this one is the city has actively pursued reimbursement as invoices were received and amendments to the agreements were approved. So I know that the city already filed those long outstanding receivables, and I think sometime in October or November when we were out here. So, and then the next one, we're, during our walkthrough, we usually do our walkthrough assessing, you know, control in terms of the different processes or the key controls of the city. So during our walkthrough, it was noted that bank reconciliations were not completed timely. We recommend that the city ensure all bank reconciliations to be completed within six weeks of month-end. Management already have a response with regards to that one. Management recognizes the need for timely reconciliations in '21, in '22 fiscal year, the lack of timeliness of course during key employee transition, which is, we normally see it when there's like a significant turnover within the department of the finance. So I believe this has been addressed already and up to date.
Yeah, I think I can attest to that. We're current on our bank recs. And we are working on February this one. We're almost done with February, so...
That's been a...
So yeah, we are current on that.
All right. So, and then the last one is during our review- So and then the last one is during our review of the open valuation report, it was noted that the plan benefits were not in line with the current collective bargaining agreements. As a result, the initial actuarial valuation reports needed to be updated prior to the completion of our audit, which is, uh, was, was discussed with Marine, another factor that was, uh, why the, the report was delayed or the audit report was delayed. Um, discuss the audit timeline to be delayed. Uh, we recommended management review all current CBAs and ensure they are in line with the OPED plan, OPED plan benefits. Um, I'm, I believe this has been also addressed by management and is working on looking into the COME CBA. So, um, we recommended, management responded to our recommendation. And then we also have some other recommendations. This is just a recommendation, it's not, um, we don't call it as a material witness or significant deficiency. Um, this is with regards to the delayed personal property tax collections for not being distributed timely to the various taxing units. Uh, I believe this has also been addressed currently by, by management and they have made their response that the deficiency have now been all caught up and this was also a result of staffing-related issues. Upcoming GASBs for next year would be something that needs to be looked into by, also by the finance is the GASB ninety-six. This will be similar to the LISs, GASB eighty-seven. This is all related to a subscription-based information technology arrangements. So, um, that, the impact of that also will be putting it into the balance sheet, which is the asset also and then the liability. If, if in case you guys will be subjected to this GASB. So that's something that needs to be watched out by the finance department as well. Next slide. I think that's about it. And our contact information is there and they know where to find us.
Anybody else have any other questions or, that's a great question on the modified floor, by the way.
I also noticed something that I couldn't understand. It says their expenditure decreased by sixty-two percent and they were putting large numbers like from twenty-eight million to ten million. What was that? I don't, I don't know what.
Where would that be?
It's in the long lead for.
Is that the management, for the first part of it, the M D N A section?
Yeah.
So that's norm, the first part of it is normally written by management. So that's their, that's the analysis of the management, but we can look at that.
See, this part of it deals with the food, the city as a whole, so with all the divisions. It's the full accrual as opposed, as opposed to the general fund, which again is that we have two bases of accounting. So what most of the time the M D N A discusses the, the city as a whole. So you will see the bigger swings whereupon, when we were presenting, we were specifically looking basically at your general fund and the water and sewer fund. So that's why you'll see a swing here that, that maybe was larger in your M D N A.
Basically, that's the balance sheet position. So and you're, you're counting all the funds, not just the general fund.
Not just the general fund.
So you've got the general fund, you've got the major roads, you've got the local roads, you've got the sewer and water funds. So these are some of the major funds. So you, when you, you know, add all of that up and you look at the change in, because basically, balance sheet is a change in position from a point in time. So you're basically comparing two positions from two different dates. And so you just see that swing going from one to, to another. So it's a, it's a change in point in time.
And also take note on the government-wide as a whole. This is where the standard requires you to book your net pension liability and your OPED liability. Those are long-term liabilities that are not on the fund balances.
Exactly. So that fifty-five million or fifty-six million almost is the net pension liability. You know, that's on the balance sheet. So that's why you're looking at these big numbers. So if you take out that liability, the number will trade like crazy.
Yes, yes.
And those numbers, nobody has control over it. They are just liabilities based on actuarial values.
You, you mentioned the revenue from the marijuana, which is two hundred thousand. You did not mention the revenue from the parking gear.
Oh, yeah, the parking meter. I don't have the breakdown.
Any of that?
Four hundred fourteen thousand. Yeah, but somewhere there.
Imagine something about parking.
Yeah, the parking, more on the expenditure on the parking. Um, I think the new parking, on, in terms of the expenditure, we spend, the, the city spent it on the general fund about eight hundred twenty-seven thousand. But the parking, I think, is falling through the. Files and for features, yes. But I don't have the actual detail because normally we lump it together. Uh, we could probably get that to you to see, you know, the exact amount of the parking revenue. Yeah, good, but it's, it's, but it's lumped with the files and for features.
Uh, thank you for your presentation, U H Y. You mentioned something in the, in the presentation that you don't have a financial statement. When will you have it or did I miss something here?
No, this is the financial.
No, financial.
This is the finances.
Yes, yeah, we just didn't, yeah, we, yeah, these are, yeah, these have already been submitted to the state of Michigan and management has.
Yeah, this is, this is.
This is the thing.
This is the financial.
Yes, yeah.
Sure. And so that's why I was referring to, if I can have the copy.
Oh, no, no, this is.
It's in email to you.
It's in emails, okay. So and second question is to the related, the personal property taxes, the staff related. What does that mean? Like, did we not have a staff to work on it or?
Uh.
What was the question?
You mean the delinquent?
Property tax, personal property taxes? It was.
Uh, in one of the recommendations, I think it's just the timing of, uh, to distribute it to the different taxing units. Um, I believe it has been addressed already.
Already happening.
This wasn't the general property taxes, this was just.
This was just the, I mean, another portion.
So basically, we collect, we, we collect property taxes not just for city of ham traffic, but for some of the other, you know, entities. Now, those entities could be, you know, some of the money that goes into the library fund, some of the money that goes into, uh, Highland Park and things like that. So we collect on behalf of that and then we have to submit that or remit that fact to the entity. So basically, what they are talking about is that they need to be sent to them on a timely basis.
Mm-hmm.
So because we had such a huge turnover and city had no people available to do that. So we have now taken care of that and now things have been transferred on a timely basis.
Thank you. This makes sense. And you, you, you have audited this department and did not find any error, any, um, issues? Your, uh, yeah, our new CFO joined and like everything's normal, everything is, is working fine?
Oh, we only added it up till June thirty.
We don't, we don't look at that.
Test them next year.
So then, so it's, it's doing great then, everything's good.
And you're gonna find out it's in next year.
We'll find out next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, things are back to normal. That's already working.
Yeah, he did give you some of this in the, in the game. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah. My question.
Okay.
Yep. All right. The next one is presentation, infrastructure overview, Hennessy and News.
Mr. Mayor, we have Tiffany with Hennessy.
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
Good.
Hello.
It's only four seconds.
Okay, cut my short.
Bear with me. All right, the, I'm just gonna do it this way. Oh, there you go. Okay, that worked. Ta-da.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. State council members. Um, so tonight's the infrastructure overview on what we've done in the past year and upcoming projects. Um, so if you push, you're next. Um, so completed and upcoming water main project. So from October twenty twenty-one to December twenty twenty-two, we replaced three hundred fifty-six lead service lines. So that was a pretty good accomplishment. We're up to five hundred twenty-four to date. Uh, still many more to go, but we're getting there. Um, for water main projects, we've, as you guys I'm sure have seen around the city, spent a busy couple of months around here with water main replacements. So Kniff Avenue from Conant to Buffalo, Dan Street from Joseph Campo into the park, and then Joseph Campo looping on Denton West to Denton East, is the best way to explain that one. Um, those have all been completed or just were in the final stages of wrapping those up and getting the restoration completed out of those. Um, so I kind of marked those as completed. And then for twenty twenty-three water main replacements were about to kick off. Um, I think they probably already have detours out there for the Kniff Avenue Phase Two, the Joseph Campo, the Conant Water Main Replacement. And then we'll be going up to bid here soon for Prescott from Conant to Ellery and then a little bit down Ellery to connect into that new, uh, Kniff Phase One project to get that water main looped. And then, um, you guys kind of screwed up my thunder here. This twenty twenty-four water main project, I was gonna discuss during our SRF public hearing, but since we gotta put that on pause, I don't have that on this slide, but I can give you a quick rundown of that. Um, so our plan for that is, uh, for twenty twenty-four, let's, uh, obviously more lead service line replacements, we're gonna be doing those for a few years. Um, D S M I, so the D W M grant got us the first hundred and nineteen, uh, verifications. We still gotta try and finish out the remaining two thirty-eight. And then Goodson Street from Joseph Campo to Lumpkin Street, which will be looped in with that Phase One B sewer relief project. Uh, Casimir, uh, from Joseph Campo to Conant, Comer from Joseph Campo to Conant, Comstock Gallagher to Conant, Conant, or Poland from Lumpkin to Dequender, and Belma from Conant to Alapena. Um, so I know it sounds like a lot. We, we're putting in, as, as you guys will hear during that public hearing, um, a pretty good wish list, trying to get additional grant funding. So, um, more to come on that. All right. So completed an upcoming alley project. So in twenty twenty-two, we completed seven alleys, so those are outlined there in, uh, orange. And then currently we have two more slated to get finished up under that contract. So those are up there just north of Kniff, uh, on the west side of Joseph Campo. Um, and then pending how much funds we have left to complete more alleys, we'll get some additional alleys selected and completed. As far as road projects, um, so twenty twenty-two, we completed ham traffic drive and we started to begin the bike lanes. So I know there's some confusion there, some questions there on, um, some of the decals, uh, rubbing off. So I just want to make sure we have that, understood that those were temporary with the winter months coming up. So that will be finished up this spring. And then in twenty twenty-three, we'll be doing Kniff from Conant to Buffalo. So the area that we just did the water main replacement. That's why it's critical that obviously we replace what's underneath the ground before we replace the road because we don't want to be breaking up brand new pavement for a possible water main break. So kind of going in that same circle, um, in twenty twenty-four, we're looking to do, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty-three, we still have some more road resurfacing that we're currently in the process of surveying right now, getting this design done so we can get those projects out to bid and completed this year. And then in twenty twenty-four, we have the Kniff from Joseph Campo to Conant project scheduled as well as the, uh, Goodson Street from Joseph Campo to Lumpkin will get done with that sewer and water project as long as that gets out to bid successfully this time and, uh, pending the SRF loan funding. So just, uh, summary of projects by year. So twenty twenty-two, um, obviously the Kniff, uh, water main replacement, lead service line replacement, we were able to do that under the D W R F loan, which did get us that thirty percent replacement grant. Um, road projects were ham traffic that was done through that, uh, TAP grant along with those bike lanes. So again, road resurfacing, we do have the C D B G grant that got done, two alleys plus some additional alleys under the, I think some mission economic development one. Um, in twenty-three, we're looking to, uh, finish up some more of the D W R F grant uh, that we got for the lead service line and water main replacement. We received the A R P grant, hundred percent funding for Prescott water main replacement and then TAP grants for the road projects. Um, and then twenty twenty-four, we do have a TAP grant for the Kniff reconstruction and we're hoping to secure some more grants to the D W R F loan for the relief sewer one B as well as the water main replacement projects and lead service line replacements. Depending on any questions, that's all I have.
Needless to say, there's gonna be a lot of construction this summer.
And until next year. And beyond.
It's, you know, obviously the city needs it. It's something that we really need to, you know. Yeah. The age of our infrastructure is old. So and we gotta, we really have to look at repairing what's underneath. And unfortunately, that's what nobody sees. But just getting, you know, the citizens to understand that, that, you know, water main replacement is critical. Um, obviously, lead service lines are huge to make sure you guys have clean, safe water. Um, and then once we get that part done, then redoing the roads. Because doing it backwards is just not gonna.
It's just waste of money.
Yeah, yeah.
This summer, you're gonna be hard pressed not to run into construction everywhere you turn.
Do you have more ellies coming to your schedule of this?
Yeah, we're putting in, we put in for some grants, so we're constantly seeking out grants. I know, working with the, trying to get that stuff in.
Thank you. That is a very important difference in the city.
Yeah, no, we completely understand that. So we're working hard just trying to see what can come up and get money for that.
We still have some to finish, plus we have more to plan for the summer already. Um, we have various grants that we've already put out for now and our state rep is trying to get more money for more alleys as well. We've got half dozen or more resurfacing streets potentially for the summer. Um, not to mention, you know, all the lead service lines, all the water mains. I mean, there's, there's stuff gonna be going on everywhere.
I think there's, there's a huge amount of, you know, infrastructure investment that needs to go into the city. And some of the biggest investment is going to be in the sewer system. And that is something that is going to require, you know, tens of millions of dollars to, you know, fix the sewer system. So the biggest investment that we require is in the sewer, then the water and lead sewer line. The roads, alleys, streets, they're the least, they should be the least of our priorities. Why? Because the things that we don't see are the real problem in the city. And that's what's creating, you know, if you're flooding, that's what's creating, you know, health issues for, you know, lead service lines and things like that. So I think we need to invest a lot of money and a lot more in the infrastructure underground first before we fix, you know, what's on the surface.
Tiffany, uh, as I heard that you're replacing a pipeline instead of one, putting three of, uh, the pipe.
He's talking about the, uh, the resolution that was there for the.
Which would save us a million of dollar next year.
Yes.
Can you talk about that?
So on Kniff between Joseph Campo and Conant, we currently have a ten-inch water main underneath the sidewalk and we have, currently have a six-inch water main in the road. So the problem that happens is obviously with old infrastructure, we get a water main break. D P W can't, you know, they don't know right off the bat because there's two different, um, water mains out there. Which one is it? Is it the ten-inch main that has a break or is it the six-inch main that has a break? So what we propose to do is replace both of them with one twelve-inch line. Um, and essentially what it ends up coming down to is if we had to replace both water mains, obviously it's extra cost. So by doing all of this, it's gonna essentially save the city about nine hundred thousand dollars. So this is, you know, in conjunction with D P W, working with them closely and making sure we come up with the best solution that works best for the city. So kind of have it in a phased approach, getting the water main in. Um, and then under our lead service line contract, we'll have the, that contract come in, get the service lines tied into that twelve-inch line. And then there's some residential side streets that we're actually gonna probably end up, uh, looping in that, those tie-ins during the road reconstruction. during the road reconstruction or with that project, trying to minimize construction on that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our planning and zoning report, the gentleman is not here. There was a little miscommunication because he was aware that there was a lack of quorum and didn't realize we were still doing the presentations. We're gonna have to push that one.
All right. So we move to the beautification commission annual report for two thousand twenty two.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ramana Lemon with us.
Hello, everyone. This will also be short. I presented a report, I believe, last week that some of you have seen, but this was more of a presentation. The report that I submitted talks about what the beautification did on a month by month basis. But I wanted to take an opportunity and talk a little bit about who we are, what did we do last year, and what did we learn, and how we need your help. So can I have the next slide, please? Can I go to the next slide? Thank you. So most of you already know the beautification commission. So the main function of our commission is to make sure that our city is safe, green, and clean for our city members, right? And there's a lot that comes underneath. There is the name of the members who are currently, I currently serve as the chair. So once we first formed last year, one of the things that we first learned is that we didn't know who we are. People thought beautification commission was more about flowers and streets and gardens. Then we learned that it was a lot more than that, as you see, like sanitation, water safety. A lot of that is under the commission. So last year, we really kind of educated ourselves into what are some of the functions, and then how can we impact the city? Can you go to the previous slide? Thank you. So some of the highlights of twenty twenty two. So the first thing that we learned last year was, in order to solve our city's problem, to make our city safe, to make our city green, we needed a diverse commission, and our commission was not diverse. When we looked around, we did not look like how our city looked like. So the first thing we did is we started recruiting. We did recruit a couple, two new commissioners, but we still have one vacancy that we need all of your help to help us recruit. Once we kind of had a commission, we last year had seven quorums, which I would say is kind of good for some of the other commissions in the city. Once we started meeting and we recruited, we quickly learned that we didn't really have a good guidance as a commission, like, okay, what do we do now? You know, okay, we keep the city safe. What does that even mean? So we kind of led some scoping exercises where we identified where are some of the areas that we can impact the city. So and we quickly learned that the city kind of functions in a siloed way. You know, just us sitting as a commission, we weren't really able to get much done. We needed partners. So next, we said, hey, we need to bring people of the community in our meetings. We started doing outreach, and we started inviting community partners to our meeting. Some of the people that we invited was a hamtramck parks and conservancy. We met last week with the high school students of Leep. We talked about sustainability, how we can bring recycling to the city. So yeah, so those are some of the efforts that are going on. Couple of initiatives that we are currently working on that we would love more effort and idea. Number one is thinking of a trash pilot program. One thing you know that unite, we have a lot of division as well as diversity in the city, but one thing that unites everybody is trash, right? Like trash is everybody's problem, but it's such a big problem. So one of the things we want to start doing is ideating on ways, how can we do something small? Some of you might have read the trash and litter D D A report that Max gave. Like, one of the things that we learned is sixty percent of our litter is cigarette butts. So that is somewhere that we can start. We know that sixty percent of our litter is cigarette butts. Maybe we can have a pilot program that address that specific issue. Another thing that we are looking into is filter usage. As you know, that we have an action level of lead of seventeen. The E P S current recommendation of lead in water is zero. We did a good job of giving filters, but we have no idea how our residents using these filters. You know, are they even changing them? Are they using them? So that could lead to lead exposure. So we are collaborating with the urban planning department of Wayne State to do a survey to understand how our residents are currently utilizing filters. Are they using properly? And in the next phase, we're gonna talk about how can we educate our residents in better filter usage. And we're also working on a tree planting initiative. So these are some of the things that our commission is currently working on. Any questions so far?
Great. Next one?
Next, next, or this one?
Oh.
The next one?
Thank you. So now that we've kind of told you a little bit of what we did last year, what are some of the things that we learned? We have some recommendations. I think one of our biggest things that we learned is we cannot achieve anything in silos. We would definitely love more of collaboration from our mayor, from our city council, even figure out how do we solve some of these problems? How do we figure out trash? How do we even start with recycling? We would also like to recommend that we implemented some of the recommendation from the trash and litter study. For example, like some of the trash bins don't have lids. You know, there are some things that we could immediately start working towards and maybe help us figure out some of the bigger issues, like what do we do of the issue of litter? We would also like to identify opportunities to pilot a recycle, recycle program in the city. We are working with the high school students to kind of figure that one part out. And we would also really like your help in helping recruit the two vacancies. I cannot stress this enough that we need a diverse commission because, especially when we're talking about trash, there's a lot of assumption that we don't have data behind. We'd like all of your help in helping us recruit those vacancies. That is all that I had for all of you. Any questions? Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You worked during the summer and beautified the city and
The select committee garden. Thank you so much. Well, you are a gardener over there, so I really appreciate that.
All right. So we move to the next one, which is City of Hamtramck. Oh, that's a proclamation, City of Hamtramck recognizing the observance of Ramadan. Ramadan, the last
City of Hamtramck recognizes the observance of Ramadan. Whereas millions of Americans practice Islam, an extraordinary mosaic of ethnic, linguistic, ideological, social, economic, and religious groups. And whereas in representation of the ninth month of the Islamic calendar, Ramadan was established as a holy month for all people of the Muslim faith. And whereas during the holy month of Ramadan, Muslims focus on devotion and service to God, purging themselves of impure thoughts and motivations counter to Islam and prayer, family reunions and sharing of generous evening meals. And whereas Muslims gathered in celebration of Eid al-Fitr at the end of the holy month of Ramadan. Now therefore, I, you, Amr Galib, mayor of the City of Hamtramck, hereby recognize the observance of the holy month of Ramadan, a month of reflection and prayer for the Muslim community. Signed, Mayor Amr Galib.
Thank you. All right. So we're done with the proclamations and presentations, and we move now to the public comments. And I would like to hear from the public choir here, if anyone would
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the only public comment we have tonight is the one and only Mr. Bill Meyer.
Okay. You get all this extra time today? What? So you get all the extra time? Yeah, so I get Were you playing baseball?
Piano stuff.
So I think we should give more credit to our cameraman, who's doing a great job filming these meetings. They're way better than the eleven thousand dollars we paid for all this equipment. And so we could maybe give him a chair. Wouldn't that be nice if you had a chair so he doesn't sit on the windowsill? Certainly. Thank you for doing a great job and not charging us eleven thousand dollars. Now all we gotta do is get someone to donate the sound system because when the room's filled, people behind can't hear people's talking at this space. So this is a much better meeting when it's not formal. I mean, I like it when you all just can talk when you want to. Do I still have two minutes or three minutes?
Two minutes and fifteen seconds.
So I'm here basically to Sorry. So I'm here basically to celebrate the return of our lovely, beautiful, courteous, and intelligent superintendent of public schools. Ms. Jalila Med is back. She'd been gone for a long time, sort of in forced exile while they're trying to find out if she committed a crime, which they can't find. So I guess they had to bring her back. She's a beautiful person, very compassionate, and she's gonna try to help get the school system back on track again. So One Hamtramck has sort of set up a welcome back Zoom meeting tomorrow. So if anyone wants to join us and give your best wishes to Jalila.
What time?
It's at six thirty, and I have the scan here, or you can go on the One Hamtramck Facebook page, and the link will be there. One Hamtramck, go in, eat Hamtramck. I have flyers if you want to pop in and say a couple of words to her and thank her for persevering and sticking to the job and coming back and trying to do it right. There's people, I mean, it's much more complicated than that, but we're gonna have a fun time tomorrow and thank her for her work. One minute, okay. I don't really have anything else to say, so.
Sure.
Give me the one minute next meeting, all right?
All right. Thank you. And I guess we are done, right?
Yep, all done. Thank you. Have a good night. Good night. Farewell. Arrivederci. Bon voyage.
I'll get that posted for the next meeting, Mayor.
See you next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Next is the budget session. Whatever we were gonna discuss today.
Hey, Rada, if you check your mail, it's already asking you. I said, if you check your email, it's already in there.
When? Right now?
Five minutes. Same as I tried doing it, I think.
Because you're not me.
You said today. Looks great. But it's only in the mail.